Good evening, Vicksburg. Welcome to tonight's Village Council Regular Session. It is Monday, June 20, 2022. I'll call the meeting to order. Tonight, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to make a quick statement on the new federal holiday we're observing today. Even though the Emancipation Proclamation was made effective in 1863, it was not implemented in places still under Confederate control. For the enslaved people, in the westernmost Confederate state of Texas, freedom finally came on June 19, 1865, when some 2,000 Union troops arrived in Galveston Bay, Texas. The Army announced that more than 250,000 enslaved black people in the state were freed by executive decree. This day came to be known as Juneteenth by the newly freed people in Texas. So, Juneteenth marks our second, our country's second Independence Day, although it's been a long settled, celebrated in the African communities, African American communities. This monumental event sadly remains largely unknown to many Americans. With that, we'll take a moment of silence. And Mr. Mallory, if you would take a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Trustee Holmes?
Here.
Trustee Keller?
Here.
Trustee Reaster?
Here.
Trustee Wagner?
Here.
Trustee Olson?
Here.
Trustee Merrill will be late. She's looking for a lost pet in the neighborhood. She did text me. And President Frisbee?
Here. So, we have a quorum available tonight. We have an agenda in front of us. I noted there was a change. Mr. Keller, you want to, or an addition?
Yes, President Frisbee. I'd like, in addition to the agenda, it'll go under Correspondence. I have a communication from a resident that was given to me last week, prior to the Fire Authority meeting, which I had asked at the meeting there to be entered into the official record. It was not read at the meeting, but I asked it to be entered into the meeting, into the minutes. So, tonight, I would like this entered in to the official record as a correspondence from a citizen regarding the Fire Authority.
Any other additions or changes by the trustees? If not, Mr. Mallory, do we have a?
Yes, President Frisbee. We just wanted to make note that, as everyone in the room was aware, we started about nine minutes after seven. We were working on an issue, attempting to resolve our streaming capabilities on YouTube. It appears more than likely through the YouTube site, but we are recording the meeting. It's just having a problem right now showing the stream live. We do have Zoom up and running, and we'll, due to the fact that our system records, we'll put tonight's meeting up as soon as possible. But, we were 10 minutes before the meeting, it was running just fine, and as things go in technology, YouTube decided to reboot.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have an agenda in front of us?
I move to approve as amended.
Trustee Wagner has support.
Motion by Trustee Keller, second by Trustee Wagner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda for tonight. Tonight, we're, we have a scheduled appearance, Mr. Charlie Church with the Historic Society, designate Depot Museum, National Register of Historic Places.
Hello, council. Yes, the Historical Society is looking to get the designation, just the Depot Museum, into the National Register of Historic Places. Basically, with this designation, it's mostly an honorific, but it can give us sort of national recognition, help with tourism, that kind of thing. We want to get more people to the historic village. Where the town council, or where the Village Council comes in, is that we need, as the village is the owner of the Depot Museum, we need to sign off on that for continuing this process. There is no liability with it regarding historical designation or any sort of constraints regarding what can be done with the Depot. It really is just an honorific. We've been corresponding with a, Mr. Tim Walsh, or Todd Walsh, excuse me, and he's the regional coordinator with the State Historical Preservation Office. And he has answered a number of our questions. Mr. Mallory brought up quite a few, you know, to make sure that we're protecting the village. But basically, what we are here, and what we're asking the Village Council, is to approve the Historical Society to proceed with the submission of two initial documents, to request that the State Historical Preservation Organization determine if the Depot Museum meets the criteria for listing it with the National Register. So, and if this is approved, we also seek that the, the council allow us to submit any and all additional required documents to move forward with the Depot Museum being listed. That's what I have. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Charlie. So, it sounds like we need a resolution of support to move forward, a motion or?
Yes, staff is recommending a motion support and then a roll call vote in having the Historical Society proceed with the next two steps, I believe that it is. It's two initial documents requesting SHPO to determine if the Depot meets the criteria for listing in the National Register, and then to allow the Vicksburg Historical Society to submit all additional required documents to have the Depot listed on the National Register of Historic Places.
Manager Mallory, for this vote, should I recuse myself as a member of that board?
I believe erring on the side of caution. I think, I don't see it as a conflict, but maybe on the vote to register. It's a good question. I'll follow up. We'll get a legal answer. But for tonight's purposes, I appreciate you bringing that forward. And I don't see it, any monetary village funds being used, or the Historical Society benefiting monetarily. So, as I'm thinking this out loud, I don't have a concern with the vote, but a good question for the future that I'll get an answer to clarify.
President Frisbee, he's not benefiting monetarily from it at all. If you want to abstain from the vote to make it clean, I think everybody here would be comfortable with that, not a problem. But, you know, obviously, you're not going to benefit monetarily from it, so...
Yeah, I just, I'll pose it to Kurt McCammon. Much similar, it's not a council appointment, I guess. The council hasn't appointed you to the Historical Society. That's a separate entity. Okay.
You're certainly welcome to make a motion, or entertain any, anyone.
Trustee Keller, so moved.
Trustee Holmes, I second.
Motion made by Trustee Keller, seconded by Trustee Holmes. We'll take a roll call vote. Those all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote. Roll call vote it is.
In the roll call vote, Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
I'll abstain.
Trustee Reaster?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
President Protem Keller?
Yes.
President Frisbee?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Church, for looking after that.
And I did let Mr. Church know, I know how busy he is. If he wishes to stay, certainly can. And, okay, he's going to stay. Here we go. I do appreciate that. Standing O for Mr. Church.
Do we have any public officials on Zoom call tonight, or I see none in the audience?
No, we do, we do not. We have two people connected via Zoom, but, but not, to my knowledge, a public official.
Now, it's time for citizens' comments, for agenda items only, if anyone would like to speak to what's printed on the agenda or amended tonight. Now's the time to do that.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and start with the electronic attendees. There's two. One via computer, and a second by phone. If a participant wishes to raise their hand while in a meeting on a phone, they must dial star nine on the phone's dial pad. The participant must once again dial star nine on the phone's dial pad if they wish to speak on agenda items. So, we'll give it a couple minutes if... All right, seeing no one, I'll turn it over to anyone in person who wish to speak to the council. We have?
Well, hearing none, we'll move off to, move on to the approval of the general consent agenda. We have the minutes of our regular council meeting from June 6, 2022. We warrant reports total of $735,571.83. We have an event request in front of us for the Historic Village Pavilion, July 30, 2022, Mental Health Wellness Day, and correspondence, as was submitted earlier by President Protem Keller.
Trustee Wagner, I move to approve the general consent agenda as submit.
Trustee Reaster, second.
We have a motion by Trustee Wagner, a second by Trustee Reaster. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
President Protem Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Reaster?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
President Frisbee?
Yes. We'll move on to council action items for tonight. We have several in front of us. As we all know, we've been working on the budget. The HR, and, excuse me, the finance team met with staff earlier in the week and worked our way through most of this, so we'll make, let comments come as, as they may. First, we have the Planning Commission DDA Budget Recommendations Full Year 2022.
Yes, on that, in front of the council, this was unanimously supported by the DDA. I paused there as I was unable to make the DDA meeting, but I think it was unanimous.
Yes.
It was unanimous at the DDA to support and approve the fiscal year budget. Most notably is an grant opportunity for downtown business owners and building owners. A little bit different. In the past, it's been restricted to facades. This will not be. It'll be based on public benefit. One of the opportunities for, the grant amount is $15,000. Two will be in the amount of $7,500, and two in the amount of $3,000. The, within that, there's a specific committee that'll evaluate the grant opportunity comprised of the village president, the chairperson of the Planning Commission DDA, the village manager, the village attorney, and then a selection from the president and/or chairperson of the Planning Commission for five. But with approval, knowing that the dollars will be committed, we'll work with the village attorney's office to put the parameters of the grant, and then we will make sure that each of the businesses within the DDA district are aware of it and proceed forward at that point.
What is the uniqueness of this versus yours?
Before, it was restricted to the amount of $2,500 and restricted to facades of the buildings only. So, the other point of note on that opportunity, it's a look-back opportunity going back to July 1 of 2021, because we did not offer grant opportunities other than the fire suppression system in that fiscal year. So, that was another point to note to the council. And I'll be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Jim, in the information that we got on this, I don't see anything about that grant in this information.
The grant was part of what was developed and presented to the, the group two months ago, and I believe, again, I wasn't at the meeting, so I apologize, but, but it is, as I said, it's a total amount of money of $36,000. We're utilizing $24,000 of village DDA funds, and we were approved for a $12,000 matching grant from the Vicksburg Foundation.
It does?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Jim, I'm, in the budget, one of the, one line items there is the economic development for $20,000, and it appears that primarily, it's a marketing plan developed by a professional marketing company, along with some other, another, some other activities there. I think it's great. It's wonderful to see we've got so much going on in the village. I'm just curious, is that something that will be made available to the council in its final form, or, I'm just curious how that'll be communicated out?
What we, I see that playing out a lot through the master plan that will also be presented next week to the council. So, if that is approved, the master plan would be initiated July 1 of 2022. That's why I put that it'd be developed after January 30 of 2023, because it'll be part of that discussion within the master plan, when we gain the data from all key, what would be internal stakeholders, council members, planning commission, DDA, everyone affiliated with government, but as well as citizens, that we can determine a course of action that, to, to highlight and, in lack of a term, market the downtown village of Vicksburg. We're talking about restricted dollars to the DDA area, so to look for an opportunity to draw, to draw citizens and outside visitors to our downtown.
So, if I understand correctly, the, the, the marketing plan is, is, runs parallel with, with the master plan, or it is the master plan?
It, it's not the master plan, but I wanted the master plan seven months into that development, because that'll start right away. What the council will oversee for sure is an RFP process and going out to identify, if we get there within this fiscal year, that process to identify a company, and then staff will recommend through that process the best company we feel to move forward.
Okay.
I don't anticipate a company being presented to the council, though, till like February, March of '23, and we're really looking at the summer of '23.
So, $20,000, we just want to put into that budget line item for that expense when it does come around in 2023?
Yeah, and I, I mean, there's, that, that department has $20,000. I'm not here saying that endeavor is going to invest $20,000, because there's other expenses that come out of that.
I just wanted to call it out, because I, again, I think it shows to the level that we're really looking beyond our shoestrings to see what this village can be. I think that's the exciting thing from my perspective, is when I see things like this, you know, this is what, you know, those in the community, when they do walk downtown and they see the changes that are there, they understand that, you know, all of us are, are looking to, you know, have more and more people come visit us, and something like this, I think, is a very positive step towards that happening.
Yeah, Rick, I want to echo that. I think it's great that we can be so forward-thinking with going into a master plan, looking at the marketing, making the most use of that data, earmarking the money, because we've got it all in cash to do it at as low of an expense to the public as we can.
Any other questions or comments? Staff is requesting that we approve the budget recommendations for the Planning Commission DDA 2022 full year budget.
President Frisbee, this is Trustee Wagner. I move to approve the Planning Commission DDA 2022, 2023 fiscal year budget recommendation.
Trustee Holmes, I second.
We have a motion by Trustee Wagner, a second by Trustee Holmes. We'll do a roll call, please.
Roll call vote will be, Trustee Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Reaster?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
President Frisbee?
Yes. Motion carries. We have police staffing on budget for 2022, 2023 full year.
Correct. The items are listed out in front of the council. The proposed budget is $713,250. As noted to the Finance Committee, it is an 8.2% increase for the 2122 fiscal year, but the significant impact of that increase is the proposed purchase of a 2023 police patrol vehicle to replace a nine-and-a-half-year-old 2013 patrol vehicle. If you take out that $48,000 purchase, you're looking at a status quo budget. It will have a chief and five full-time officers, including a school resource officer. We'll continue to have 24-hour-a-day and seven-day-a-week police service and protection for our citizens and visitors of Vicksburg. We will continue to be the only non-public safety police department, to have all of our officers medical trained to the first responder level, so we can respond to all medical med one and med two calls within the village limits. It'll be a police service that's founded under a foundation of procedural justice, based on service with commitment to treating everyone with dignity and respect. We'll continue to have daily neighborhood canvassing by the police officers. We'll continue to check all businesses within the village limits each night. We'll have customer service follow-ups by the chief of police and sergeant. Anyone going on vacation that's a village resident is, is encouraged to contact our department. We'll check your house each day you're gone, and any special request, we'll evaluate as well. We'll continue to organize interaction with youth of Vicksburg throughout the summer months, including new reading program, and the kickball with cops or against cops that will continue now that we're, we're out of the pandemic. We'll continue to have visual presence at all Vicksburg school drop-off and pickups, and staffing for all special events within the village and school. There is $6,000 for legal counsel and training specific for officers, moved a considerable amount to the online presence. But we also, since Officer Peterson retired, need to have an officer trained to the firearms instructor certification level. So, that's an additional $1,500 in a training budget that hasn't been there the last few years, because Officer Peterson held those credentials. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The chief did apologize for not being here, but he is on a well-deserved week-long vacation with his wife, well out of the state of Michigan, so...
Jim, I just have a question about what, explain what the new reading program is. I'm just interested.
The chief has contacted, I believe, the library or the school system and are looking for opportunities, and you might help me with this, if the library has a summer program that brings in guest reading to youth. I believe that was one of the requests Chief Sanderson made, is to have the officers and staff on that kind of rotation, where then they, they'll be able to read to kids, and, and the kid, children be exposed to a police officer in a, in a kind of a non-traditional setting.
I think that's a great idea. So, thank you.
Jim, would you do me a favor and just expand a little bit on what procedural justice-based services? I, I know you've shared this with us before, but I think it's worth repeating.
Yeah, the procedural justice came, it, it's been around, a different vernacular for many decades, but really honed in under President Obama's 21st Century Policing Model that was published in, I believe, 2014 or '15, which is basically the foundation that you're going to treat everyone with the respect and dignity they deserve, and looking for, for ways to positively impact those in need in non-enforcement areas. Everyone in this room has been around long enough to know that police in society are going to have some enforcement activities. There are going to be civil violations addressed, whether that's speeding or, or nuisance-type situations that come up in the, in the village. But our interaction is designed to establish a relationship that people get to know the officers' names, and in a small village, look, one, to interact, that open communication, to have a positive impact. And once you do that, we're, we're, I was fortunate enough to present at the Midwest 21st Century Policing a few years ago, but I, I am absolutely committed that any entity I'm responsible for that has policing will be, will be under that model. I've seen the impact, not only on the community, but in some aspects, more importantly, on the officers who are placed in opportunities to interact with citizens in non heightened situations.
And I appreciate that, because if you really look at this list of services rendered through the department, it, that's the basis for all of this.
Yeah.
A resource officer, having an officer check on your business or home. I mean, again, everything you've, you've said, so, I, I just, it, it can't be said enough, I think, that, you know, that philosophy, what it's the foundation for, and, and the way that, you know, our, our police department does work with the community. So, I just, thank you.
No, I appreciate, appreciate that. Trustee Holmes, as, as well as it's creating value for, for this investment. It's, you know, and, and we're very, very fortunate. We have a chief and all the officers who, who've embraced it and see the positive impact, I believe, on, on... I believe, on, on the village, the citizen and, and themselves. I'm proud of the entire department. In fact, I'm going to take public time now. One of my most disappointing things was at the state of the village to have it hit me after that I recognized everyone and missed the profession I've loved for 32 years and have been a part of. So I certainly, uh, apologized to all the officers for that, but I hope they, they know how much I appreciate their efforts in, in our community and for this village.
Any other questions or staff? Well, we have a request to approve the police staffing budget for 2023 through 2023 full year.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the police budget as submitted.
Trustee Wagner, I'll support.
Motion made by Trustee Holmes, support by Trustee Wagner. We'll do a roll call, please.
Roll call vote will be, uh, Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Protam Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Frisby.
Yes.
And just to announce to the council, uh, we are back connected to YouTube. So we'll have the entire meeting that's, Alex has put in place a process that has that always backing us up. So the entire meeting will be on, but we are streaming live back on YouTube, so.
Thank you, Jim. So we have office staff and budget for 2022, 2023 full year. And we'll say there was a, a lot of good conversation around this with the finance team. I, I appreciate everyone, uh, being involved in that very much. Um, is there, Jim, is there something you would like to address within?
Yes, um, just this, this, uh, again, is both the 213, um, as well as, uh, 253 and 266 departments. Uh, so it's our office staff, treasurer, uh, village clerk, support staff, community, uh, community engagement director, director of community engagement. It is, uh, pretty much a status quo, uh, budget. I'm just going to switch over to our, our, our new cop year. Switch to another. I know, I'll take it. Do you have it?
Give me, would you like mine?
No, I, I've got four copies up here backing up the backup, so. Just have to. I apologize. Copy number one. Copied every other page. So, um, but as, as you see, and plus I put the allocations in, one of the, the key things is how the areas of responsibility for each position is, uh, where we debit the funds that use for all expenses around those positions. So you might see what the allocation, whether it's general fund, sewer fund, water fund, uh, some have, um, uh, the golf, if, uh, like certainly the treasurer and clerk and their responsibilities, uh, that are associated with the golf fund. But on the administrative department, um, you can see it's actually about a, uh, a, a fairly substantial reduction compared to the 21, 22, um, almost 16%. Um, and that's, again, uh, those positions, uh, as well as our part-time positions, accounts payable and customer service reps. So maybe if I pause after each one, if there's comments, it's, uh, 101, 213. Under the, uh, community engagement, um, as you can see, three years, um, been very fortunate with the Vicksburg Foundation funding 50% of the position. Um, this entering our, our fourth year, uh, we have a different type of allocation. Um, as some of the, uh, Alex's responsibilities have really focused in on downtown. So part of that approval process was $7,500 of, of that money, uh, to be, to be invested in that. So you have the total amount on, on that position as well. It goes on, uh, again, on counts payable, customer service represent, uh, representatives, the amount. Um, I'll pause there before going to the 215 village clerk position.
Jim, if I could.
Sure.
I, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Lee recently and really enjoyed a couple hours we spent together because there's so much that he does that quite candidly I wasn't aware of. Um, and I, I guess the, the, the question that I've got is that, um, would it be possible, uh, again, I'm not trying to micromanage here by any means, but just simply because he's so involved in what he's doing, is there any way we can, we can get a sense of what that is, however appropriate you think it is?
Here tonight, or you mean?
No, just.
And tonight, he's involved. I, I think I've, uh, three years ago, when I, uh, first approached the council and the foundation at the same time, I knew I had an opportunity to bring someone on our team that I had known for, at that point, 20-plus years. I knew how, um, his, his, my own personal experience with, with Mr. Lee, and I think everyone finds this out, including here in the village, is his integrity is unimpeachable. Uh, when I asked Mr. Lee his opinion, that's what I get, uh, regardless of what the consensus might be in the room, and that's what I would like as part of my team. So first and foremost, um, I could go into work ethic, character and everything, but he just has unimpeachable integrity. The other thing he has, uh, when you know a person, you see them and interact with them professionally for, for now, uh, 24 years, is, is an absolute servant's heart to, to do what's right for the people regardless of their lot in life. Um, so those were two huge factors for me in, in approaching Alex to bring him part of the team. He also, uh, is, um, I think he said it in these meetings, he's a, a, a veteran of the United States Navy and it's kind of duties as assigned. So we've been in, in incredible infrastructure project and I've gone through periods of time, my own time for the village and, and that the social district would have been delayed six months if we didn't have Alex in the position with his, I gave him the mission. Um, he knew the meetings I should attend. He knew the, uh, communication that I should be aware of. He kept me constantly communicated, but as one can get, um, through emails and that, he, I mean, so he's invaluable in those type of assignments. Uh, there doesn't need to be oversight by me. Um, and it truly is, I, I mean, from the veterans memorial, his most recent assignment, I pause, hopefully his ears, I don't know if he can hear this mic or not, maybe I'll watch it tomorrow. Um, but he gets about a day and a half between assignments, just, and those are usually full day Saturday, half day Sunday, and then I kind of text and say, hey, what do you think about this? And we start engaging whatever the next special assignment is. So the other is invaluable public contacts. When you work in Kalamazoo County and you interact with the state of Michigan and federally through Washington DC, I think, again, um, having integrity that's, that's pointed straight north and unimpeachable, people on both sides of the aisle respect Alex, um, that they answer his phone and we get valuable, uh, advice, uh, through those contacts.
All great points, Jim, and I agree wholeheartedly with them. I, I guess my, my point is, and I, I, I say this and with no sense of wanting to get into your team, that's your team. You manage your team on a day-to-day basis. This gentleman, however, is doing something that's fairly unique in this community. It's a position that's never been there before. And I think it's highly, it's highly regarded, I think, by council, what, what Alex has done in the three years he's been here. Um, and, and I even suggest, made this comment to Alex, and I'll be very candid with you. Alex said, you know what, Rick? I'm Jim's wingman. I'm here to do whatever he wants me to do. Again, I respect that, but I, I guess I'll leave it at this, and that is just a thought is, it'd be great, maybe periodically, if Alex would like to have a, an opportunity to, to share thoughts, comments with the council regarding what he's doing, because again, I, I view what Alex does as very important, but I also view it as something that's fairly unique. And I think it would be great if we had an opportunity to hear more from it, or if you would like to share those, those comments with us. That's all I'm saying. So, thank you.
I have a comment too. I, I would like to say that I think that Alex is so important because he represents Vicksburg extremely well. And I listened to him on the radio last week and it's amazing how he gets Vicksburg's name out there through this whole thing. And so I saw him at, uh, Rising Dawn and told him how much I appreciated what he's doing, but it's, it really, he represents us well. He makes us look really good. So I just want to thank you, Alex.
Appreciate hearing those comments. You know, one thing, um, not, certainly, uh, for Alex, but really speaks for, for every single person I've recruited to be a part of this team, and that's Scott Sanderson, again, 20-plus years of professional contact with him. Michelle Morgan, I've known, uh, since the late 90s, um, is the, on a daily basis, I have interaction with the directors of, of, of the village. And, and I agree with you, we can, uh, put out, we've talked about it multiple times, that certainly the community and, and probably the, you know, people involved in government don't realize what we do or juggle on a daily basis. Having said that, it also, it's a group of individuals that, you know, our motto is we'll just outwork. We just keep working. Um, I, we were someplace this weekend and someone asked, you know, why aren't you going to take a little pause and celebrate downtown? And it's like, no, that's done. We're, we've moved on. We have other projects and there's other goals that we want to accomplish for the village and goals that this council has for us. So, um, we will do our best to, to present each of those areas of government, um, as we go through the next fiscal year for sure, uh, attempting to capture what's been accomplished and what's on the horizon.
Well, we have a request in front of us for the office's staffing budget for 2022, 2023 full year. President Frisby, I move as submitted.
Trustee Reister, support.
Motion made by President Protam Keller, support by Trustee Reister. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Certainly, uh, Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Protam Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Frisby.
Yes. We have approvals on the office staffing budget. We have the DPW staffing and budget for 2022, 2023 full year.
Yes, and this is, uh, um, want to take time tagging on to what we just concluded with. You know, uh, one, one was blessed when I started, uh, in August of 16, within, a very short period of time, few months, we had an opportunity to look at the Director of Department of Public Works. Um, I did not, I knew Randy, before that, uh, opportunity and process and, and given that additional responsi- responsibility, I want to really highlight how thankful and proud I am, um, of Randy. Uh, not only he knows everyone in the village in that service and all of you have probably been impacted by it, but, uh, Randy's pretty, I, I, I love him because he's frugal and he watches his budget and, uh, but yet he knows, knows when to, uh, to make it known of, of needs and wants that he has in his department. So, so it's really been a, been a good fit and I've really appreciated how he's led that group of employees, uh, since fall of 16 there. But it's, it's, um, you can see the budget, uh, it's less, about $57,000 less than a five-year high. Um, it's a decrease of 1.13% from the 21, 22 fiscal year. Um, I do want the asterisk, as I've put it there, it's not factoring in the DPW pole barn building because that's going into the next fiscal year as well. But one of the things in last year's budget that was approved by the council and by last year, I'm talking 21, 22, the one we're in currently, was a new, uh, 2022, 2500 pickup truck. Uh, and we also budgeted if it needed a new snowplow on the front of it, not knowing if it would hook to one of our old ones. Due to the supply chain, that request is being pushed forward into 22, 23. We, uh, um, they weren't even taking, uh, my deal's orders on that for us when we contacted them. We waited until January, which was too late. So, um, that is part of this, this request. Um, and, uh, again, be happy to, to, um, answer any questions. We, we will continue, we do have five employees that were approved and, and five, uh, you've met the two most recent hires, um, and you can see how they're divided up between the general fund, water and sewer. So it'll have five-time, five full-time employees, continued, uh, construction of the infrastructure project. We have a couple of months of it. Um, capital investment is that 2023 pickup truck. Uh, and we did, part of the budget has, has an amount. Um, we won't know until next spring, but we'll have our eyes and radars on another, um, used quality snowplow from a larger municipality that might come available. Um, still going with obviously full-service water and sewer infrastructure to maintain the eight parks that are all listed out. We did put in, uh, $2,000 for hand tools and those are mainly associated with, uh, working auto mechanic-type tools because of all the work, um, that the crew does on our, uh, machines and a lot of times they end up using their own personal tools. So with the new building, we'll want to start outfitting it with, uh, mechanic tool set that can, can stay there. So be happy to answer any questions on that.
Jim, just one question, and that is with the, um, changes in staff and with the definite additional allocations that you mentioned, do you think we're where we need to be? Or when you look at the village, what the needs are, what, what are you looking at, do you think, a year, two years, five years? I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
I think, uh, on DPW or?
Yes, yes, specifically, yes.
Specific to DPW, I think, uh, we're in good shape, uh, probably for the one to three-year range. It depends as we look out further, and I think that's part of the process that'll come in the master plan too, is the vision, um, of what areas of growth are in the village. We all know we've, um, looked at, approved to, and we should finalize here in July, the purchase of property that's zoned industrial. So there's that opportunity of growth. There's opportunity to grow the parks and rec system. Um, I'd say three years, uh, we're in good, uh, staffing levels. Uh, last year, we did call in, uh, a part-time person to help plow that, but we also had an employee off. off. So, I think that would be the next step. You'd see it kind of stagger. If you remember back a few years ago, we hired some college kids on, on part-time in the summer before we went to that fifth full-time. So I see that kind of effect. The workload necessitates some part-time people being put on DPW ultimately in a year or two, those that becomes another full-time staff member. It's a, it's, it's a valued skill set, especially, you know, today we dealt with it, all of our records indicated that we'd be dealing with a four-inch water main, and when we dug down 10 feet, lo and behold, it's a two-inch water main from the 30s. So, we, you know, yeah, that's a, takes a skill. Because I, when I walked up, the guy who's been doing it, I don't, I always hate saying years because I'm wrong, 20-some years, is, is mentoring these young employees on how to set the contraption up before they go down in the hole and put it on the water while it's still charged. And they listen to him, and thank goodness, because it worked exactly as he said, but it's a skill set that has to get passed on down in the generations. And that's, yeah.
We have a lawyer's line in on him.
Yes.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah.
So Jim, overall, seeing a decrease in the budget with the addition of staff and other line items for the next fiscal year?
On for DPW, yeah, just that small percentage, I think it was 1.17.
Any other questions for staff on them? We have a motion to approve the DPW staffing and budget for 2022, 2023 full year.
Trustee Wagner, I move that we approve the DPW staffing and budget for 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
Trustee Holmes, a second?
Trustee Wagner, motions. Trustee Holmes, second. We'll do a roll call, please.
Roll call will be Trustee Reister.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
President Protam Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. So we have item E, employee compensation, 2022, 2023 full year.
Yeah, and this, did a comparison, sent communication to 14 municipalities, well, more than 14, but we received 14 replies, including six, that were in the Michigan Municipal League Wage Analysis that was presented to the Vicksburg Council in January of 2021. We compared their wage increases for the 22, 23 fiscal year. This wage increase is for all non-bargaining units or, or people who are not in the police department, the sergeant and officers, this does include Chief Sanderson. The aver- average 22, 23 wage increase for municipalities in the wage comparison study was 3.26%. The average wage increase for the municipalities not in the wage comparison study was 3.09. Social Security this month listed the 22 COLA increase at 5.9%, and the Consumer Price Index is at 6.3%. The range of the wage increases for all municipalities had a high of 4% and a low of 2.5. I believe that the performance of the team of professionals working for Vicksburg is unmatched for a municipality our size. Based on the performance of the individuals and the comparable base wage increases by similar municipalities, I'm recommending a 3% base wage increase for employees of the Department of Public Works, Village Treasurer, Village Clerk, Counts Payable, Director of Community Engagement, Police Chief, and Customer Service Representatives. I have listed off three employees with a specifically hourly wage. All three employees are of the Department of Public Works. It is more than a 3% wage increase at, at the wages they currently are, but I feel it's necessary for much of the comments we just made, many of the comments we just made. This wage puts them above a starting wage at other municipalities within a 15-mile radius of the village, and they have, I believe, all demonstrated a work ethic and commitment to the village that should be recognized. So, so those are the three employees on a specifically hourly wage that would start in July 1st, but for, it's a 3% base wage increase. So be happy to answer any questions.
President Frisbee, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Just to share with the rest of the council, during the, leading up to the Finance Committee meeting, I did ask Jim for some specific information, and the one thing I truly appreciate about what Jim does, and as we can see, not only in the agendas every week, but also in the information he's providing, there's a level of depth here that's, that's really good. Well, he also provided some additional depth, because my question was more centered around over the last five years. What, what is a trend? What are we looking at from a revenue and expense standpoint? And in short, I can share with you that our revenues continue to grow and out, and outpace expenses. And so, from my perspective, this is supported, and as I've, as you've always heard me say to Jim, I'm, I always give Jim deference in managing his team. The one thing that I would like to ask as a suggestion, I was thinking about making a motion, and I'm not going to do that instead, I, I think that we're, we're a tight enough group where whatever consideration this can be given by the Human Resources Committee, but I think it would be, it would be worth our while to look at, at, at the, at pay increases, and, and we continue to offer pay increases, it's more merit-based instead of blanket increases. You know, one of the things in my four years here, I can share with you, my perspective is every year, you know, we've, we've seen increases within staff, it's, I'm not saying it's not warranted, I'm not saying it's not substantiated, but what I am saying is that, that the reality is, is that, that, that's what's occurring. And so from my perspective, you know, when it started, I think as best practices, we went to the MML and we looked at all these various-sized communities that were similar to our size, and we adjusted, and, and some, some was substantially, excuse me, they, they weren't small increases, but we did the right thing, and that is that we brought staff in line with similar municipalities. And I, I just think that from my perspective, and I'm wrapping it up, by the way, I apologize, but I just think it'd be worth consideration, and if we could look at merit-based pay increases, because the thing is, there might be some that, that would warrant a larger increase than, than what's being offered within staff. But, because that's similar to what happens in, in the, in the public world that's out there. You know, I, I think there, that's, so anyways, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Just a thought for the, for the Human Resources Committee, if it's something that for the 23, 24 budget, if we can consider that, that'd be appreciated.
Agreed, well, you can always take that into account, you know, as you and I had spoke earlier about merit raises, carte blanche, pay increases. And, and with that graph where we saw revenues and the expenses were, were pacing at, at a professional rate and a good indicator of what next year will happen. If we hit a flat line next year, revenues flat, expenses going up, then we have to readjust. We have to step back and look at individuals with, without doing a carte blanche raise across the board. And I think that's where merit raises come in, if you have somebody that outperforms the rest, and, and you're really constrained by your budget, that's when you look at it. But that, that information is good, is good discussions for HR and the finance team. So we had, we had a really, really interesting conversation, a, a well-established, well-thought-out meeting here last week with the finance team, and a lot of that, that came out. So it's, it's good to have these, these discussions and ideas.
Again, I want to reiterate, the level of detail Jim provides, I, I, I look at that all the time, folks, and I can tell you that, and I even asked him this question, I said, Jim, what's a cop doing, knowing this kind of way of looking at finances? And, and he had the right answer. He said, you know what? It was, it was my mentor, and this is what he needed from me, and, and I, I respect that, and I appreciate, Jim, you, you know, la- last week sharing that information, it's very, very helpful, I think, for the Finance Committee to have that level of detail so that we can, we can make the decisions that we need to make. So, thank you.
Well, even cops need administrators. So that's, that's where he comes from, and, and that's his passion, right? So we all see it every day. Any other questions for staff or discussion on, on that? If not, entertain a, a motion.
Trustee Keller, so moved.
Trustee Reister, support.
Motion made by Trustee Keller, second by Trustee Reister. We'll do a roll call.
Roll call will be Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Protam Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Motion carries. And with that, we'll roll right into the Village Manager's Compensation, and I want to do the same and recommend a 3% pay increase for the 2022, 2023 manager compensation package. And I think a lot of that is just based on the comments that were made, the level of detail that's put in weekly, daily on his reporting to this team is very much appreciated.
President Frisbee, if I could just offer a comment. One of the things I asked Jim last week when we were looking at the budget, I asked him, I said, Jim, how often do you look at this? And his answer was every day. And that, that tells me what's important to him. And that is, you, you can't run a team unless you know that you, that, that's the foundation for it, is your budget. And, you know, from my perspective, that's why I'm so grateful, and that's why I appreciate being on the Finance Committee, because from my perspective, it all starts from the dollars. If, how are we managing the dollars? Are, are we transparent in the way we're managing the dollars? And, you know, Jim, you checked both boxes as far as I'm concerned on that. So, I, I definitely support President Frisbee on this.
Well, if you'd support it, would you like to make a motion as such?
I guess I will. I'll make a motion that we increase the village managers' pay by 3%.
Trustee Wagner, a support.
Motion made by Trustee Holmes, supported by Trustee Wagner. We'll do a roll call, please.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
President Protam Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
And we'd like to go into a closed session, I promise you it won't, won't take long, to discuss Village Manager employment agreement. Entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Supported.
Motion by Keller, supported by Wagner, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll go into closed session, we'll be right back. We'll go into closed session, and we'll be right back. Okay. Ready, sir? Yes. Yes, indeed. Will someone make a motion to come back into open session?
Trustee Wagner will make that motion.
Trustee Holmes, I second.
Motion by Trustee Wagner, seconded by Trustee Holmes to come back out of closed session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you for entertaining that. We went into closed session, and what I am asking of this team is to make an extension to village manager Jim Mallory's contract. It expires on June 30 of 2022, and I would like to see it extend on June 31st or July 1st through December 31st of 2026. I think that'll give us all a long-term commitment for Mr. Mallory, give us a sense that he's going to be with us for a while, and that will give us a defined date to plan and secure replacement if the time comes up. So that's my desire. Thank you, sir.
President Frisbee, if I could, question? As it relates to the employment contract, the current agreement that Mr. Mallory has with the village does expire at the end of the fiscal year, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so...
What? No?
No.
What is it, 2024?
Oh, 2024. That's...
Is that what you meant?
Yes, yes.
I just want to extend it.
Extend it from 2024 to 2026.
December 31st of 2026.
We're avoiding arbitration.
Okay.
Well said.
Trustee Wagner, I will make the motion that we amend the village manager's contract to extend through 2026, as suggested.
Trustee Reaster, support.
Trustee Wagner makes motion that we extend the village manager's contract through December 31st of 2026, supported by Trustee Reaster. We'll do a roll call, please.
Roll call, Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
President Protem Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Motion carries, and I will have our lawyer draft that up. And when we sign it, I will send council members a copy that wish to have it. Thank you very much, team. We have a resolution for utility billing of delinquent, delinquent utility billings to the tax bill.
Yes, the council has in front of it Resolution 06202022-01. It's stated out there, this is a procedural matter that we do each year involving parcels that have outstanding utility debts. And Michelle Morgan puts a considerable amount of time. So if you have questions, I'll allow Michelle to kind of explain it.
Thank you. Yes, it's our time once a year that we do this. This year, all of the delinquencies are utility-based. There are no other types of delinquencies. We are asking for your approval. We have sent out letters already, and it's, President Frisbee, would you like me to read the entire resolution? Or it's part of the record, you have it.
Yeah, I don't think...
I'm available for comments, questions.
I don't think reading it is necessary.
Okay.
So we go through this every year at this time. But if anybody has any questions, certainly announce a time to ask.
President Frisbee, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Just one question. Are we experiencing an unusual amount of delinquencies or anything more than years past? I just haven't looked at the previous resolutions. Just curious if there might be anything different this year than previous?
No, not really. This year actually is down. We currently have $8,058.83. And last year, we were at $10,427.77. So that may not be the final number if some of these parcels are paid before the end of the year, they will not be placed on the tax roll. But this is where we're starting down a couple thousand dollars, which is a good trend.
Very good.
Well, we have a request by staff for a resolution to utility billing to delinquents to the tax bill. Just a desire of this council.
President Frisbee, I move that we, I move that we support the Resolution 06202022-01 to place utility delinquent billing to the tax bill. Trustee Holmes, I support.
Trustee, President Protem Keller.